Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Delnort County Board of Supervisors meeting. This day Tuesday, March 13th, 2018. We have returned from closed session. Liz, is there anything to report out of closed session today?
No reportable action.
Thank you very much. So I'd like to take a moment to pause for a little reflection today and keep in your prayers today the Barnes family who have lost their matriarch this weekend. Supervisor Berkowitz, could you please lead us in the Pledge Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have introductions to new employees today? Nope. Let's go ahead and move forward with the consent agenda then. And we have items four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10 on the consent agenda. Let's go ahead and open that up for public comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Do we have a motion on the table?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Kylie, can you please poll the vote?
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. And on our consent agenda, we do have a proclamation. Supervisor Cowan, could you please read that?
Yes, thank you. This proclamation of the Delnort County Board of Supervisors proclaiming March 26 through March 30, 2018, as tsunami preparedness week. Whereas California's long coastline, its proximity to other coastal states with offshore earthquake faults, and its location of the Pacific Ring of Fire make it vulnerable to tsunamis, and whereas California has been struck by more than two dozen tsunamis with waves three or more feet in height since 1812, including 15 that have caused damage, including the devastation of the Crescent City Harbor on March 11, 2011. And whereas a dozen residents of Crescent City, California were killed by the tsunami generated by the 1964 Alaska earthquake. And whereas tsunamis are caused by underwater earthquakes and landslides that can occur at any time with little warning. And Crescent City's unique geographic increase, geography increases the area's susceptibility of tsunamis, and whereas recognizing, education, and awareness are fundamental in saving lives in a tsunami event. The County of Delnort and the City of Crescent City continue to plan and train testing mass notification systems, community preparedness, and response. And whereas the Governor's Office of Emergency Services, the California Geological Survey, the National Weather Service, the County of Delnort, and the City of Crescent City will test the ability to issue, to issue a tsunami warning for Delnort County via the emergency alert system on Wednesday, March 28, 2018, between 11 and 12 noon. And whereas the Governor's Office of Emergency Services hopes to expand participation of all coastal cities in the test in 2008 and beyond. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Delnort that the week of March 26 through 30, 30, 2018, as tsunami preparedness week in Delnort County on this 13th day of March, 2018. Thanks.
Very good. Is there anybody here to accept that today?
Jay, would you like to accept that?
I, you know, how about we, we have Mayor Enscore accept it since he's here in the audience. I think it'd only be wise since we're in this collaboration together.
I have something that sounds very much wiped out on the menu.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. Okay, so it's 10:05. It's time for our public comment period. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board if you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda. You may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Do we have public comment today? Good morning.
I'm Paula Enam. Anyway, I sit at home and I watch you guys on TV. In the last couple of meetings, there've been a lot of people here talking about how we've got to get in and we've got to put Proposition Four into action, or 64, excuse me. So I read up on Proposition 64, and Proposition 64, Section 2JD says it allows local governments to ban non-medical marijuana businesses as set forth in this act. Then it goes on to say how you can have six plants and that you still have Proposition 215. So anyway, this is still within the purviews of the law, so I would hope that you could move the conversation a little bit. And I also heard a lot of threats about people not voting for different individuals because of their stand. And I'd like to point out that Supervisor Gitlin has always had a conservative stand on legalized marijuana, and yet he won against two pro-marijuana candidates. So anyway, like I said, Proposition 64 does allow local governments to ban non-medical marijuana businesses as set forth in this act. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment today? Good morning.
Yes, thanks for letting me speak. My name's Chuck Orton. I'm going to say something about the tidal wave. I was 19 at the time, riding around with my brother-in-law in a 55 Chevy. His brother lost two children in that, four and six years old, watched his whole town go upside down. One thing I see through my whole life here, I'm 72 now, when they blow the whistle here, and you can go to any of them stores downtown, and then people are just, they don't care, you know? I don't know what you can do or with the mayor. I know he, he's very good about what he does, to send bulletins or, or like when we were at the school, you know, and they had the bombing and the, under the things and all this other stuff. What they can do to help people before they'd be more aware that it, you know, like I said, a 19, a 55 Chevy watching this whole town, take them huge buildings and just slam them. They brought the army in here, the next day, my family had some property downtown, so we got to go right down the middle of the street if we could, you know, you had to go around stuff and whatever you had to do to clean things up. But I don't know what you folks can maybe help do, you know, to send out paperwork or something, because people are so complacent out there, they, you know, they don't pay no attention. And once you see this happen and you have deaths in your family, then, you know, it's a whole different ballgame. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Other public comment today?
Good morning, Supervisors. My name's Mario Fernandez. I'm a staff member for SEIU 2015, the Long Term Care Workers Union here in Delnort County. Our chapter chair couldn't make it this morning, so she left me with a statement that she'd like me to read. My name is Tara Anna Michonne. I am the Delnort County Chapter Chair for SEIU Local 2015. I have had my medical assistant in phlebotomy licenses. I have been a CNA and a front office assistant. I have worked in many industries, from private home care to slopping fish guts in Alaska. Now I'm a home care provider, providing 24/7 care for my daughter. The state pays for a maximum of 283 hours a month with a 66-hour weekly cap to my child who has severe autism, speech and language delays, and sleep disorders, which is why I'm unable to attend these Board of Supervisor meetings. She's 15 years old, five foot 10, and 340 pounds. She has a pyelennital cyst that is open and has been draining for 18 months, and we are waiting for sedation surgery to correct this problem in San Francisco. Because of these ailments, she takes opioid pain medications, which are all liquid because she does not take pills. I homeschool her because she wasn't retaining what she was being taught in public school between the class size and all the distractions of the other students, and their behaviors became a big problem. Her average day is anywhere between 22 and 30 hours, with her taking 10 milligrams of melatonin at night, every night, and only sleeping for about two to four hours, most days like a toddler. We color, we go for walks, we work on numbers, letters, writing, et cetera. I do all her laundry, all her personal care, including changing her menstrual pads and keeping her cysts dry, clean, and bacteria-free. She has no friends of the same age. She cannot be left alone for more than two minutes at a time because she will make a mess with whatever is handy. She could injure herself or anyone near her depending on the environment. She has no concept of danger, time, or money, although she is an opportunist. The first chance she gets, she could unlock the door, run into a busy street just to play in a mud puddle, or chase a bird. Because of this, I've had to have my sister move in with me to help raise my child. As a single parent, it is very heartbreaking to know that you are your child's only friend, companion, and advocate. Most of the worst situations have been avoided because the IHSS program allows me to use my medical skills to give her the best quality of care, the best quality of life possible under the circumstances. And as, and as an added bonus, I get to watch my daughter learn and grow in a positive environment where she is comfortable, where she is free from dangerous situations. The IHSS program would be nothing without the IHSS worker. We effectively provide quality medical assistance and companionships, assistance in cleaning, meal preparation, transportation to and from medical appointments. All we are asking for in return is ways that allows us to provide for our family so that we may live with dignity and so that we may provide for our clients' dignity. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Bill Diaz. As most of you know me as the Cub Guy who works with our youth. But today I'm here to tell me about the part of me that you guys don't know, the IHSS worker that works for my autistic brother, takes care of him daily. We have many roles in our positions. We do everything from nursing, helping our elderly. We're teachers, helping teach our developmentals how to maintain themselves on a day-to-day basis. We're social workers. We're, we're doing all areas things. And with that, I just want to ask you to put yourselves into the jobs that we do and think about what it's like doing nursing skills, doing teaching and all that. And on a minimum wage thing, how much more we do than it's worth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other public comment today? Okay, we'll return to the board. We're just reflecting a little bit on Chuck's comments, and good timing today being here. I think Mayor Enscore's presentation will help shed some light. You know, this has been a fairly big discussion in our community since we started traveling to Rikuzentakata, many of us here on the board and on the city council, and what to do about what many of us see with our public, which is essentially a sense of complacency and not a remembrance of history. So how do you best move that forward? I think many of us, as we begin to think about what that might look like, as we begin to communicate with the public, we have some ideas. And I, Chuck, I really appreciate your comments today because it really hits home on, on a few of the things that we've been thinking about here internally and how better to, to get that sense of awareness higher. So I appreciate those comments today. They were well timed. Let's go ahead and move forward with our budget transfer items, which is item, budget transfer item 03-01, item number 03-02, item number 03-03, item number 03-04, budget transfer item 03-05, and budget transfer item 03-06. Public comment, please.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
And a second. Was there any public comment? Okay, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Kylie, can you please poll the vote?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay, on our agenda today, we had a, as you'll see in the print copy, there was a little bit of a mix-up, even though the times are right, there was a little bit of misorder on items two and three on our scheduled items. We're going to, as it shows there, item number two is actually the 10:15 timed agenda item, which is a presentation on Rikuzentakata, Japan by Mayor Enscore, and it is 10:15. Mayor, please join us at the dais and looking forward to hearing about your report and more importantly, the travels of both you and the Board of Supervisors on this most recent trip.
All right, thank you. Chair Howard, members of the Board of Supervisors, it is a, is a pleasure to be here this morning. I do have a PowerPoint. I apologize that I got here a little late, and so hopefully everything, everything works. I will just say as we, as we begin that the, the difference in a year at Rikuzentakata is, is significant. What, in some of the pictures that I will show you, what we saw this year versus to what Chair Howard and others experienced last year is, is nothing short of remarkable. Last year, the area that is going to be downtown where they're actually building was nothing but mounds of dirt. People still were looking for places to, to get their groceries, and so even the, the field, you had had to have been there both times to understand the difference of, of just the, the local public as we engaged with them. So we'll put this up. I'll go through this as quickly as possible. I've got three kind of themes that I would like to address through our proposal, so we'll see if, see if this comes up. One of those there at the bottom, oh, that me. Okay, got it. Okay. Perfect. I'm in control. Okay, so, we think. This is our group. We had Supervisor Berkowitz and Cowan, along with Pro Tim Keim, Kylie and Hannah Horner, Debbie Olson from the Board of Realtors, Kenny Cowan as well, and Brad Keim joined us. They, they opened up, the first night we were there, with a, a public celebration. We had over 100 guests that came out, including local officials as well as staff members. Mayor Toba welcomed us and then for the first time publicly announced that he would be coming to the United States. Previously, he had talked about that, but it had never become part of the public discussion. So not only did he announce that he was coming, but he asked for volunteers, which was kind of interesting. When, when you don't know exactly what's happening, because it's all in Japanese, when all of a sudden a bunch of hands go up, I thought that was interesting. So we did gather at the Miracle Pine. This is the, a tribute that, that you'll see on the pins, for those of us who have been there, this lone pine. It was the only tree that, of the 70,000 pine forest that remained standing after the 2011 tsunami, which this is the seventh anniversary of just Sunday. The tree didn't live. They courted it all out, and then the top is actually reproduction, but it is something that people from all over the world have come just to, to view. I want to talk about three things as quickly as I can today. Disaster preparedness, the, is the first. And this is the former visitor center right on the main highway. And I just give you this just for scale. I, I added a high water line there. That's still very difficult because of the angle and the fact of how this building is situated. This is Brad Keim standing up at the top by this. This is, this is over 17 meters in the air, so well over 50 feet. That's where the water went through. This is looking out from the top of that building over what is going to be the new downtown. And so as you look across there, and Chair Howard, if you'll notice all that flat area, if you remember last year, that was nothing but piles and piles of, of mounded up dirt that they were stockpiling. And then in the far back distance there, where you can see some buildings in development, that is the first, be all the way to, to my right, to your right, there is the new shopping mall and is the first big development. It's also where the new public library is. This is all along, along the main highway, that sign there is an iconic sign that they're remaining because it survived when everything else was destroyed in its path. The water, the top of that sign is actually 15.1 meters, which is 49 and a half feet, I believe. And the, the water actually was above the top of that sign, but miraculously that sign along with that one pine tree managed to, to weather that, those forces. That's Brad Keim. It's a picture that he shared on Facebook of his six-foot-two frame standing next to this 49 and a half foot sign. This is the seawall that has been built, they've been built, seawalls have been built all along the coastline in Japan since the 2011 tsunami. The, the one that's in the primary harbor at Rikuzentakata is 12 and a half meters high. It was designed not to stop the wave, but to slow the waves down if they ever have another tsunami of this magnitude. It's also designed in, in a way that it's, it moves. If you can see those blocks, those are all individual blocks that are all connected. They're connected with chains. It's designed so that it will withstand this, much in the same way that our, that our harbor is designed to flux, flex and move. So is this wall, which is pretty creative, and it's also designed to be a part of a, aesthetically designed so that people will be able to use this to walk upon. Eventually, to the right there is the actual open ocean. That's where the 70,000, well, actually where the seawall is is part of where the, the pine forest was. That pine forest that had over 70,000 trees was over 300 years old. It had withstood multiple tsunamis in the past. Access ramps, so eventually when this is all done, they get the, the forest replanted and the beach reconstituted, people will be able to come up and down these walls. It'll be a tourist type of attraction where people have access to the beach while at the same time having, providing some functional purpose of disaster preparedness. This is the former fire chief. He, some of, some in our group affectionately nicknamed him the Japanese Chuck Norris. He's a very impressive man. When he began speaking, you just kind of got quiet. He was boots on the ground on, on March 11, 2011, and talked about this from a very real-world perspective, from, from not necessarily disaster preparedness, but dealing with disaster as it happens. He showed us some video that I hope to have available when the Japanese delegation is here. We're looking at putting up a audiovisual display in the cultural center of real time of what was taken, video taken from city hall's roof and watching how things changed second by second. It, it was nothing short of terrifying to see the, how quickly things changed. The word that I have up there for you, Tsunami Tendenko, is, is a principle that was being, had been taught in Japan since the 1940s. The basic principle is that you, in the case of a tsunami, you're responsible for your own life. They, children had been taught this. Adults had been taught this. They had grown up with this principle. And yet, statistics show that when the tsunami hit, based on exit interviews, over 40% of the population hesitated when the call for evacuation came. 40% of the people were, were not sure, should I just go? Should I go look for somebody? Should I go do this? Even though for an entire generation, they'd been trained with this principle. And yet, as Mr. Orton had mentioned, that principle had become something that they had taken for granted. There was one community, however, just north of Rikuzentakata that, that took a different approach, which is interesting, and I hope that this works. I'd like to show you this little one minute and a half video. Five years before the tsunami, in the same prefecture, just, just up the coast, a professor encouraged the local school systems to say, we need to get back to teaching our kids what Tsunami Tendenko means because they've forgotten, we've forgotten. They didn't lose any students because their students knew exactly what to do when the time came. That's huge. I mean, it's an education component, and it's something I think that when you look at, and I've been questioned, what's the, what's the big value of, of going to Japan? And are you guys just going, doing, doing this stuff as, as trips for yourself? And, and no, it's not. That's a, that's a, that's a key component where you can look at, at just a few miles up, where five years before, somebody said from a disaster preparedness point of view, we need to teach our children. And the whole premise of Tendenko is, is that even as, as hard as that may be to, to accept from a philosophical view that I leave people behind, it empowers others. The, the principle being that if one child turns and runs, because that's what he's been taught to do, another child will follow him, and you save two children. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a powerful principle. This is the new fire hall, and it's also their emergency operations center. They don't distinguish emergency operations from regular daily operations. Their daily operations are emergency operations. They're the, unlike our OES or Emergency Operations Center, EOC, EOC, which we open, open when we, we know that there's some kind of disaster or impending crisis. Theirs is open 24 hours a day. It's where they do regular dispatch for, for fire or, or police or anything else. This is a automated call system. They have installed speaker systems throughout the, the city so that at any given time, they can give a, an audio alert. It's not just a, a horn or a siren. They can actually give instructions and tell people exactly what to do and where to go. From a disaster preparedness standpoint, and I don't want to give the impression, because I gave the impression when I first got back, that somehow I undervalue the work that's already been done here. What I want to say is that there is a learning curve that we need to apply for us. I don't know how many of you are familiar with these two documents. This is a, this is a planning scenario that was done in 1995 that talks about what it might happen here if we had an 8.4 level of subadduction zone event. Here's our tsunami playbook, which was done in 2015. Here's the difference. Those are great tools for people in leadership responsibilities, though I have discovered many leaders who have never seen these documents or read them. Here's what they've done from an education standpoint. They turned it into a around the world, and they're training with them in Rikuzentakata so that they know how to provide that kind of training. Let's move on, economic development, move quickly. This is the new shopping mall, it's a base. The, there's a mall with a variety of shops, grocery store, Maya is at the other end, drug stores in between. Also, the public, new public libraries there. Happened to be a day where you can see that things were getting back to normal, had a group of schoolchildren who were meeting with the chief of police and local law enforcement officials about bike safety. And that's what they were doing that day. So it was, it was like a normal day. Honestly, and Supervisor Howard, or Chair Howard can attest to this, we didn't see very many normal day type activities a year ago, but these children were learning about bike safety and we got to be a part of that. Local oyster farming is huge. We visited with Mr. Sasaki and his fishing company. He's a third generation oyster farmer, is one of the, the industry has rebounded, though it's still about half of what it was before this tsunami. That's Mr. Sasaki there. He's got young children. Somebody asked him whether or not his son would be an oyster farmer, fisherman like he is, and he kind of shrugged and smiled. So I'm, I'm assuming that that's what he thinks his son should do, but he didn't want to say that. He has three boats, very similar to looking at boats in our own, in our own harbor. Just one of the, head of Agriculture Department for the city of Rikuzentakata, talking to us about the inundation of salt in the rice fields all around the city. They had to wash the dirt, which I know sounds very counterintuitive to us, but they had to wash the dirt. They dug it down below, below a meter and took all that dirt offsite and washed it, let it dry and bring it back in. As a way to mitigate just the labor intensiveness of that, to start developing other methods, they have started building greenhouses, which doesn't require them to mitigate the problems in the dirt because they're not using the dirt. They're just using the open ground to grow massive greenhouses. Right now, they're, they're growing strawberries and they're growing cherry tomatoes. They're growing in cedar bark. Very, very limited amount of actual dirt is used in any of these things. And they're doing this in the middle of the winter. Again, from a, from a standpoint of things to be learned, I mean, it was snowing over there. This is something we could be doing. Those are all tomato plants. That's the, that's how much dirt it takes to grow these tomatoes. Literally, it's a half an inch thick. It's a controlled environment. Do you know what that is? You see the picture of the box? It's a beehive. So they have bees in there, in these controlled environments, massive heaters to be able to keep it a constant temperature at night. This is their water, watering system. I took a picture of this and then I'll zoom in just because I got a real kick out of that. That their watering system, that they bought their watering system from us. One of the things that Japan has done that's very interesting is they have what's called the hometown tax. Hometown tax allows taxpayers to allocate a portion of their income tax back to their hometown if they want to, a certain percentage. And Rikuzentakata has responded to that, and this is a nationwide thing that they do, is everybody that allocates a portion of their hometown tax back to Rikuzentakata, they provide a gift to that person proportional to the amount of money that they gave. And then they're using some of that money to employ disabled workers through the Dream Project. Kenta Yoshida, that's him there holding the book, runs this program for disabled, development of disabled adults who are packing these boxes to be sent out. So they're taking that tax money and, and while they're giving gifts back to the people who gave it, they're also employing local workers, which, and workers that obviously might not have had an opportunity to work, in other words. Cultural change, these are, these are all seniors in high school, got to meet. They were all here in our, in our school previously. One of the girls, the girl in the back, she, she said to me, I asked her about her experience and they're all prepared to go to college, and her comment to me was, coming to America was the absolute greatest thing she'd ever done in her life. Hard not to buy into that. We got a chance, a local spice company in Japan, I can't think of the name right now, it starts with A, is giving back to cities across Japan that were affected by the earthquake with community engagement, cooking classes and providing some monetary help. And we got to be there and, and cook with a group of ladies who were just given this opportunity. That was awful. And then we did a lot of dancing afterwards. And I will say that Supervisor Berkowitz and Callan are mighty good at doing that. They welcomed us into their homes one of the evenings. This is the home that Supervisor Berkowitz and I got to visit in. These are the families that we stayed with. We also got to go to a place called Rainbow House. It was built by a Japanese nonprofit called Ashinagawa. They have a worldwide outreach to orphans. It was, they built three of these houses in Iwate Prefecture after the tsunami. And in, in Rikuzentakata proper, there were forty-two children who were orphaned, means they lost both their parents in the tsunami. And, and so it was built to provide access and resources to them. Interesting things in, in some of the rooms. They have a red room that has punching bags and boxing gloves, allows for children who are frustrated and angry to go in there and take out some of that anger. We might think about installing some of those in some of our public buildings. And then right across the hall, you can go over and hold a, hold a stuffed animal and talk about how you feel about what you just experienced. As the, as the time has passed, they've opened this up and it is now being used for a variety of children and family services. When we were there, it was full of babies, which was really exciting to see. We also, from a cultural exchange, we, we got to meet the parents of a local artist. He has cerebral palsy, doesn't speak, but he paints. He lost all of his works. He's in his mid-thirties, lost all of his works in the tsunami and didn't paint for a number of years immediately after, and then started painting again. His parents are there on the far left, his name is Osaka Akuska, I'm sorry. And I'll just give you one of his paintings. This is his painting, and each of those people you see there represents the over two hundred people who were never discovered after the tsunami in 2011. And I can just, I can just attest that you just stand there and look at that and you realize that that was the way he tried to communicate this great loss. It's pretty, pretty significant. Next steps, really quickly. Did make an official invitation on behalf of Delano County and the city of Crescent City for the establishment of a sister city relationship and for Mayor Toba to visit us and, and bring a delegation. And he accepted that invitation. It was, I, the far left is the Rikuzentakata city flag, and obviously the Crescent City flag is on the, on the right there. I will say that that was, that was pretty phenomenal. It was so phenomenal, and we didn't know it was going to happen, because normally they fly a flag like this of the lone pine is normally on that, on that pole. And it was installed, designed for this flag. So when we came around the corner, somebody looked up and saw it. I don't even know who saw it. Somebody says, our flag's flying at city hall. And so the bus driver had to go down this one-way street, turn all the way around, come back around because we wanted to be able to see the flag, which is pretty cool. They will be here the fifteenth, they're coming in Sunday, the fifteenth of April. They'll leave first thing Wednesday morning on April the eighteenth. They're going to be flying right here into Crescent City on Contour Airlines, so timing could not be better for the fact that Contour starts flying on the eleventh, and we'll get to be able to have that. We will have a public gathering on April sixteenth, that's Monday night, starting at six PM at the cultural center. We will be having light refreshments. There'll be, as I said, an audio visual display that will highlight what happened in Rikuzentakata in 2011. There'll also be a presentation about our own harbor in 2011, as well as a demonstration of panels that show what happened in nineteen sixty-four, so that their delegation can understand kind of where we have been and what we've been through. So that's my presentation. I hope I didn't take too long.
It's, it's not a worry, Mayor. Actually, I think a lot of the attention that we're paying to this in, in the sense of now, moving forward to this celebration of a sister city relationship on April sixteenth, I think it'll help bring some of that community awareness that Chuck has brought to us today. I think the more that we talk about as a board, and Supervisor Berkowitz and Supervisor Callan, both had highly emotional and charged experiences over there that I know they'll share in turn with the public as we move forward. That energy, I hope we could continue. As a matter of fact, maybe, maybe prior to our, our next two meetings, we'll continue this discussion in some way, shape or form to continue that recognition of the fact that, hey, we too experience natural disasters here. But Supervisor Berkowitz, Supervisor Callan, I don't know if you want to add anything to Mayor N. score's presentation, but please feel free.
I just think it was a tremendous learning experience for us. It just brings to mind how unprepared we are compared to what their preparations are. And I think it's going to force us to take a look and see how we can improve.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Callan?
Yeah, the same. You know, I mean, the conversation came back. What I saw was a lot of hope over there, which is great. I think they were in such disrepair, you know, disrepair for so long that when we were there, it was much different from when you guys were there last year. And it was nice to see that hope and, but we as a group, I believe collectively, came back going, how do we get it into our schools? I mean, I grabbed one of these as well. It's like, we need to, we all grew up learning to get under the desk for earthquakes, you know? We need to drill this into our children, into our adults. For me, the hardest thing was taking care of myself first because as a mom, you know, my, my mind thought was, what do I do to set up my child? And somebody said to me, no, Lori, you can't. You can't go pick him up. You can't tell him where to be. He's got to take care of himself. And I didn't want to hear that. I still don't want to hear that, but that's reality. Because if I do tell him to be prepared for me to pick him up and I don't make it, or he's sitting there and he doesn't make it because I didn't get him. But that was a hard thing. And, and that's what we need to teach, and it is hard. And we said, well, how do we get that message across? And all of us said fear. And you hate to use that word, but I don't know else, how else to get it out to the community. These people went through drills with a hundred percent mandatory participation and they still lost thousands of people. And, you know, I, I see our, I hear our alarms go off every two, or on the, you know, second Tuesday of every month, whatever it is, and we don't. We ignore them. It's part of our life. It's in the background. How do we get people to take it seriously? And I don't know the answer, but I know that I will continue to talk and push to get things like this into our schools and the pocket piece that Mayor showed you. I think everybody should have those, not just our leaders, but everybody should have something to understand how important it is and what we need to do if it happens to us. But thank you. Great presentation. Good job.
I very much appreciate the opportunity. I appreciate the board supervisors giving buy-in to this. I think that, that the more we talk, the more I have an opportunity to share, the more people can realize that this is more than just a feel-good thing. Frankly, this is a lot more work than, than I ever anticipated it was going to be when I first engaged with this. But, and just as a side note, I do have somebody working on translating this right now so that we can at least figure out what we might want to replicate to put into our school systems and have talked with our, with Supervisor Harris about, about that as well. So very much appreciate the time this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. We're, we're going to go ahead and move forward with our ten twenty-five timed item, which is a presentation from our chair, Jesse Davis, on the progress being made by our cannabis working group. Jesse, please join us.
Morning. Thank you. Glad I got to see Blake's presentation and appreciative, we're very lucky here and have simple problems to deal with compared to a lot of other places. All right, so I wrote the report this time and I'll just read it and answer any questions you guys might have. This is from our, our meeting on March first. And we discussed retail locations and the density of those, those locations for cannabis retail outlets. We looked at maps prepared by the planning department showing the commercial and manufacturing districts, but not including the neighborhood commercial zoning because that's mostly residential. The maps mark schools with a two thousand foot setback and churches with a one thousand foot setback. State law does not include churches in their setback requirements or definitions, but does include youth centers, daycare facilities and parks with a six hundred foot setback that can be changed by local ordinance. Churches with any youth oriented facilities like playgrounds, ball courts or youth programs would be considered youth centers and so would be protected by setbacks. We're working on the maps to add daycare facilities and parks with both six hundred and one thousand foot setbacks. And we'll have both of the circles so that we can look at what they look like respectively. The maps we have now show these setbacks as circular, as a circular perimeter around a center point. However, the revised versions will show polygons with setbacks from the actual property lines of the properties. We agree, the group agrees, that retail locations should be a thousand feet or more apart from each other. We haven't gotten into a lot of detail about that distance, but some sort of significant distance between retail locations. So far with these maps, there appears to be a good balance between available space and prohibited space for retail. The group is inclined to allow the zoning and setback requirements to be the limiting factor in the total number of retail stores rather than capping the number. Additionally, all applications would be subject to the conditional use permit process. Most of the work now will be getting all the relevant locations on the maps and making sure the setbacks are appropriately sized. The group has consensus with not including onsite consumption at retail locations at this time, but should be revisited when the liability issues can be better understood and mitigated. Onsite consumption could be allowed under state law. Retail delivery services are allowed by the state and will be part of our discussion at our next meeting tomorrow, March fourteenth. We will also start forming a tax structure for each of the state licensed categories for cannabis businesses. Just to pause there, that would be retail and cultivation, and then in between those you have distribution, processing and manufacturing and possibly lab testing. Many other localities have adopted taxes that are adjustable by the board or council within a certain range, so like a percentage range that would be adjustable. The most functional examples have a range that is narrow enough to prevent abuse, but wide enough to allow for change. apart from each other. And we haven't gotten into a lot of detail about that distance, but some sort of significant distance between retail locations. Uh, so far with these maps, there appears to be a good balance between available space and prohibited space for retail. Uh, the group is inclined to allow the zoning and setback requirements to be the limiting factor in the total number of retail stores, rather than capping the number. Uh, additionally, all applications would be subject to the conditional use permit process. Most of the work now will be getting all the relevant locations on the maps and making sure the setbacks are appropriately sized. The group has consensus with not including onsite consumption at retail locations at this time, but should be revisited when the liability issues can be better understood and mitigated. Uh, onsite consumption could be allowed under state law. Retail delivery services are allowed by the state and will be part of our discussion at our next meeting tomorrow, March fourteenth. We will also start forming a tax structure for each of the state licensed categories for cannabis businesses. Um, just to pause there, that would be retail, um, and cultivation, and then in between those, you have distribution, processing, and manufacturing, and possibly lab testing. Many other localities have adopted taxes that are adjustable by the Board or Council within a certain range. Um, so like a percentage range that would be adjustable. The most functional examples have a range that is narrow enough to prevent abuse, but wide enough to allow for changing markets. So, some localities started with huge double-digit taxes, twenty-five percent. Um, I think the city of Rancho Cordova has a one-hundred-dollar square foot tax on retail, which basically just taxes it out of anybody even being able to apply. So that could be considered, uh, you know, if you didn't use the word abusive use of a tax policy, would be sort of an ulterior use of, of a tax policy. So, yeah, most places that started with high taxes and the double digits are now finding it to be unworkable, unworkable in the sense of if you wanted to actually foster a, any, uh, cannabis economy. Some places like Humboldt tax-only cultivation and have no additional tax on retail, while others tax every sector. So, something for the Board to consider would be whether we want a comprehensive tax system right away, um, to fit in with the November election, or do we want to wait until the industry can become established before we determine what taxes are appropriate, or something in the middle, um, since we need to kinda make those decisions soon regarding the tax project. So, that's about it. That'll be the bulk of our discussion tomorrow. Just be looking at these revised maps that, um, Planning has done and, um, talk about the tax details. Any questions?
Excellent. Questions for Jesse at this time?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz.
Jesse, the last paragraph you have, "Something for the Board to consider would be whether we want a comprehensive tax system right away, or whether we wanna wait until the industry can become established before we determine what taxes are appropriate." You're looking for some direction from the Board, is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering if we can put this on the agenda for discussion and action at our next meeting, so that we could give him some direction, either this way or that way. Is that possible?
Will that be the last, uh, discussion of the working group on taxation at this point, or will you be addressing it tomorrow?
Um, yeah, we'll be addressing it tomorrow in bulk. We just touched on it a little bit at our last meeting.
So you'll have a little bit more detail to potentially have some ad, advice or recommendations for the Board to consider if we were to place it on our next meeting agenda?
Certainly, yeah. And, um, and any input at this moment is also timely to, for us to take to our meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, absolutely. So if we wanna offer some input now, obviously Jesse's willing to accept that and bring it to his working group tomorrow, but I, I do wanna consider that because there is a timing issue for the May, I think the May deadline, to get it as a valid initiative, that the Board's willing to go forward with that.
Great.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Gately?
Jesse, are, are you aware, is there a prohibition in taking a product, let's say, a retail product from Humboldt County, and, uh, using the mail system, the UPS system? I hear you see you're shaking your head.
Yeah, you can't ship cannabis products.
And, uh, that you cannot ship.
Cannot ship cannabis products.
So, the, it, it kinda complicates the problem that for some in need, even medicinal marijuana, which is not included in Alma, that this would be problematic in offering this product here. Is that, is that a consensus among your group?
Um, I'm not fully understanding the question, but, um, uh, medical cannabis will still be accessible, um, under a commercial structure for the county. It doesn't, um, eliminate or preclude access to medical cannabis?
But the mailing of the product?
Say again? Oh, mailing, yeah. Mailing is, that's not gonna happen, not, not until, you know, federal prohibition adjusts. Um, yeah, there's no, there's no future.
So you would, you would agree that this complicates the issue in terms of accessibility?
Um, yeah, certainly. I suppose it, it does. Yeah, the, um, access needs to be, um, like old-fashioned brick and mortar access at, at various locations, various communities, because you can't ship it. You'd have to drive a great distance otherwise, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Cowan?
Well, I'm thinking that, um, it's my understanding that they were working on, um, some type of a tax frame to bring to us. So, uh, you know, and they have a meeting tomorrow.
Yeah.
So, I, I think some type of consensus from this Board, other than putting on the meeting next, um, in two weeks of, do we want them? I mean, I personally want to see them go forward and put some type of a price structure together, a tax structure. I'm curious what you guys are thinking. We know that the state off the top's taxing about twenty-five percent. We know that if we're, it's gonna be allowed, any money we're gonna make is off the taxes and/or permits. Um, we know that we can't set those taxes. We have to take it to the voters, and our timeframe is narrow.
Very.
Um, I was surprised that you said three to five. I guess in my head, I was looking at other counties that were double digits, so I, I had always thought, you know, ten to twenty percent, but.
Sure.
Um, your last, uh, or one of your emails said, had talked about, I think, two to five percent. So I'm really curious, um, what has failed, what in other counties, and what you guys feel is going to benefit us enough to do it, um, yet enough to keep the black market out? I think that's my biggest fear, is the black market. My other thing that you talked about, I was surprised because, you know, I have in my head what I wanna see, and it's pretty conservative, I guess. I certainly don't, you know, I wanna see a cap on retail. I do not wanna see what we're seeing in Brookings now. You know, we've always had, I think, three co-ops, and I, I couldn't imagine seeing any more than that here. But that's just me, you know? That's just my opinion. Um, I don't wanna see a whole bunch if we have to see it. I, I, I agree that we've gotta have, you know, the medicinal out there, and, and it's legal now, and we've gotta control it and understand it, but I don't wanna see a whole, um, bunch of shops. Um, I also wanna have say on, and signage as well, 'cause I don't wanna see a bunch of big pot weed signs. And I don't know if once you put into place that thousand or two-thousand-feet radiuses away from the churches and our schools, and because we're such a small area, that that will bring it down to a small amount, um, or what? So I guess I'm curious to see those maps once they're done, because I know in my head, um, I'll be pushing for a cap of some sort.
Right. Yeah, it's, um, if I can respond to that in, in backwards order, yeah, the, the maps are definitely a real eye-opener. It's really, um, easier to see what you're looking, look, dealing with. And, um, sort of the, the, the desire behind trying to limit it that way versus picking a number and capping it is because there's just all kinds of legal complications with how you pick the number and how you pick who applies for those, say, five. And it just adds a lot of complication and layers that, that, um, county staff isn't super excited about getting into. And so that's why we're hoping that it could just be limited more naturally by available space and, um, and just the, what the market will bear. And the more that we look at these maps, they are pretty restrictive, and there isn't very much available space. So, the downside to creating a very limited available space is that you create these value bubbles in the spaces that are, that are setback appropriately, and so they become extra valuable, and they're, you create a little bit of a real estate bubble, which isn't good. You don't want that. But then if there's, you know, if there's not enough space, um, you know, I mean, if it's, anyway, I'm getting distracted on which way I was going with that, but, um, the idea, I think, is that, um, there'll be enough space available that it won't blow up the pricing, um, but keeping the, the distance far enough between them, and when you look at the, what's available commercially and manufacturing anyway, and then you get into this, um, you know, the no zones, um, there isn't much, there isn't much left, really. And so, um, I suppose you could see a market experiment that might test how much the market will bear, like you see in Brookings. So, you know, can't predict that. It'll just be part of the discussion as we go forward, but the maps are a big eye-opener, for sure. And then on the, on the taxes, um, yeah, the, as, a lot of localities aren't taxing retail at all. Like Humboldt doesn't, I, I didn't look at Arcata, they may have a, a tax, but there's other dispensaries around. City of Eureka is sort of setting up a no-tax zone in order to, um, to grab the business and let it develop. So a lot of localities are moving in that direction, looking at more, looking at it more as a way of, um, developing the community, improving the real estate in the beginning, rather than a tax windfall in the beginning. Other localities started right in with a huge tax, and it just didn't function at all, fell apart, nobody could afford to even participate in it. Some of that was intentional in some places, others it was just a miscalculation, a lack of understanding how much money is available. Um, the state taxes are pushing forty to fifty percent cumulatively, when you add the cultivation tax, fifteen percent excise tax, um, state sales tax. It's, the cultivation tax amounts to about twenty percent right now at today's price. It's a, it's a nine dollars and seventy-five cents per ounce, so it's a dollar amount based on, you know, a dollar amount per unit value, not a percentage. So that percentage can change hugely, right? You know, if you're, it would, could be a hundred percent if, if the price came down low enough. So, because of that, there's not a lot of room for localities to come in with additional double-digit taxes and then still be able to discourage the black market. But I don't think it's Delano County's responsibility to discourage the black market. It's, um, that's sort of a statewide project. That's sort of the, the movement and purpose behind the MCRSA Regulation of Medical Cannabis and Prop sixty-four Regulation of Recreational is, um...
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yeah, um, I, I have some, some of the same concerns that Supervisor Cowan is talking about, and I'm not sure that I would be in favor of a self-limiting type, uh, program that you're talking about as far as, you know, but let's just let everybody go at it, and we'll see what, you know, how it ferrets out. And, uh, I think that we, we need to, I think we need to have a, a number, um, but it would like, I'd like to see something solid come out of this working group, um, that we can have some input on. I've, you, you know, you're always looking for, you, you say you're looking for direction, but I'm looking for some output, and, and I really don't think I've seen, uh, you know, you, you've mentioned some things that you have consensus on. That's great. I'd like to see that, uh, I'd like to see that happen, so that we can actually put some, have some input on what the consensus is, um, I think more than us just throwing something out, say, "We wanna see this," or "We wanna see that." But, um, you know, I, I appreciate all the work that you're, that you're putting in, um, and, and I'd like to, you know, I'd like to have some sort of a, uh, what you think might be a timeline on what we're, how we're gonna do, deal with these incremental additions to this ordinance, uh, and, and how you see that playing out. I'd like to see what you think. I know the, uh, the land regulations are gonna be, what I think are gonna be the most difficult.
Right.
Uh, I think those, you're gonna see at the tail end of this thing, because I think it's gonna take that long to do. But some of these things that are, uh, kinda low-hanging fruit, you know, I think we should start working on those and get a sequence of things going, but I'd like to see that happen. I'd like to, I'd like to have some sort of schedule from the group on what you think is gonna happen, uh, and, and some sort of timeline.
Sure, yeah.
If we could. And, and, you know, consensus is great. Would, I'd like to see something saying, "Okay, this is, this is what we're thinking, uh, X number of dispensaries, and this is where they're gonna be located," and then let us give you some, you know, say, "Hey, you know what? That looks pretty good," or, you know, "Hey, wait a minute. This isn't, this isn't what we talked about, or this wasn't what we thought," so that we have some, a real dialogue where we can go back and forth. Um, and I understand your frustration on wanting us to lay something out, but, uh, you know, I, I personally think that I need to have some more output from the, from the working group.
Sure, certainly. Yeah, something that you guys can actually look at in terms of, that's bigger than, or more detailed than just this kind of idea sharing, um, that would come from, from County Council. And so, um, the, the holdup there is just timing and staff hours and money, really. So, um, for example, the personal cultivation guidelines, we're not really discussing that as a working group anymore. That'll come to you guys in a forum that you can, um, you know, deal with in terms of details. Um, that'll come from County Council, hopefully sooner than later. And then same thing with, um, with these retail, um, regulations. And you're absolutely right, the low-hanging fruit first, the stuff that we, um, can get done quickly, but also is, is the most timely, and I think we're doing that in the right order so far. But, um, we all, we have, um, talked specifically about creating, um, the kind of timeline that you're talking about, that sort of spells out our best estimation for each part.
Great. Um, and then getting back to the tax issue, when you're talking about, uh, the fees that are charged on cultivation, now, are you talking about state fees, uh, or are you incorporating?
No, that's separate, yeah, yeah. So cultivation tax is just a tax, um, and then the, the license fees that one pays to the state is separate. They're high also, but that's not part of the numbers that I'm throwing out there.
So when you're talking about a certain percentage, uh, tax on the, the, uh, sale itself, or?
Production.
Production of the, of it, you're not talking about state taxes included in that?
Um, well, that's a state tax. The cultivation's tax is a state tax, which is different than a state license fee. Um, state tax goes to the general fund, the state license fee covers the cost of licensing, goes to the Bureau, the Cann, Bureau of Cannabis Control. Um, so it, it adds another couple percent, sure, to businesses' gross tax burden, if you wanna call the fee a tax. But I think in legal terms, you know, fees and taxes are different, 'cause of where the money goes.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that, but I'm.
But, yeah, it's all the state. It's got nothing to do with the county. Yeah, the county gets some return back in some structure. I'm not sure exactly how that works, but.
But in Humboldt County, for example, uh, they only have cultivation tax, you're saying? And so what does that, what does that cumulative tax add up to? I, I've heard around forty percent. Is that accurate?
No, the, the county tax, um, they tax it by the square foot, which is how a lot of localities are doing it, which is smart until there's a, a robust track and trace system that can actually monitor the, what the actual yield of the crop is. So, um, in the meantime, you're just paying a tax on the square footage. So let's say you had a five-thousand-square-foot garden. In Humboldt, you'd pay five thousand dollars, one dollar a square foot. In tax, I believe it goes to their general fund. Um, different types of cultivation, uh, more intensive types of, of their cultivation is two dollars a square foot. Indoor cultivation is taxed at three dollars a square foot, and those are just taxes that go to the general fund, on top of their expensive, um, application fees. I, I believe it starts at about six to eight hundred dollars for application fees, um, or license fees, I'm not sure what they're calling them. Um, yeah, and that's how Humboldt does it.
And you're, you're throwing out a lot of numbers, and you're confusing me.
Sorry.
I'm trying to get to a point of, of the product itself.
Yeah.
What that cost is.
Sure.
By the, whatever.
Yeah, okay, well, um...
And what does it end up going to the general public for?
Sure.
What, what are?
Yeah, it varies. So when you tax a crop by the square foot, it depends on how good a farmer you are, right? Or how successful you are, how lucky you are with the elements. And so, this year, there's a lot of farmers crying foul with Humboldt, because they're, they get a tax bill in the mail before they sell a crop or turn a crop, or if they, whether or not they even produced a crop. Um, so, in terms of a percentage, it can really be any amount. But in terms of an actual, a successful crop, um, a dollar a square foot is not very much. It's a low tax. Um, five thousand dollars on a five-thousand-square-foot garden, um, maybe one percent, two percent on a properly-run garden.
Thank you. Supervisor Gately?
Which brings me back to a question, Ms. Ms. Island, uh, you brought up about the city of Rancho Cordova in the Sacramento area. Is charging a, if I think I heard you correctly, Paulette, it was a, a hundred dollars a foot?
For retail outlets, yeah.
Okay.
That was me.
All right. I'm sorry, was there a different speaker?
It was Jesse that presented.
I said it, yeah.
I'm sorry. So, what would be the purpose of putting a tax that high, other than to discourage the use of making it potentially just unsalable, just too high?
That's what it was.
That, you're talking to me about Humboldt is a dollar a foot, and someone else is talking about a hundred dollars, another governance is talking about a hundred dollars a foot.
Well, two different parts of the business, so, um, you, you've seen crazy numbers for cultivation, like twenty-five dollars a square foot, which is pretty much prohibitive. You can't get into, can't even get going. And, um, like I said, I don't know if that's a voter confusion, people not doing the calculations correct, or in the case of a hundred dollars a square foot for retail in Rancho Cordova, probably more likely just using the tax ability to tax as a way to prohibit it, because they weren't able to prohibit it by statute. So, I don't know. In my view, it's sort of a misuse of, of taxing power, but.
Sure.
I don't know.
Thank you. Um, Jesse, if you don't mind, I'd like to, uh, get back to some of the questions that Supervisor Berkowitz brought up. Joel, do you mind joining us? Thank you. If you could, um, I guess the only sensitivity here is, was discussed by Jesse, is the timing specific to taxation. When do you think a discussion would be appropriate for the Board, knowing that you've been working with the working group on this now for the last couple of months? You've had one meeting on taxation, you'll have another one, sounds like tomorrow. What's the timing then for the Board to actually discuss that? Do we need it on the next agenda, as Supervisor Berkowitz is requesting? How do you see that playing out?
I would suggest waiting an extra meeting.
Let the working group do its thing tomorrow. Let the working group do another meeting and then come back to the board.
And that still allows us the time to have something on the ballot, potentially by May?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So the, the, um, the Board of Supervisors is going to have to pass a taxing ordinance like any other law, and then it goes to the, the, um, uh, the ballot. And so it, it is tight here because it's, you know, already halfway through March. I think it would be easier if the working group decides really what it wants to do and just kind of brings you a finished product.
Okay.
Or as close to that as possible. And since I'm, I'm actually going to be traveling tomorrow, I won't be at this working group. So I'd like one more working group after that. It's not that complicated, you know? It's just deciding what to tax and how much. And I, I think it can, can be had out in a couple of meetings.
Okay. Very good. Supervisor Berkowitz, is that okay or what are you thinking?
Yeah, I don't have any, I don't have any problem with that. I think waiting another meeting will give us more information and we'll be able to make a better decision.
Very good. Thank you, Joel. Jesse, do you have any additional items to add at this time?
No, not specifically. Not that I can remember. If I'd taken some better notes of what you guys were saying, I might have, but...
No worries. I'm, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public comment on this item. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Hi, I'm Victoria Dickey. I live in the county. I have four points that I want to make. They're somewhat disjointed, but they all are related to the issues that are on the agenda this point. Number one, there is a major elephant in the room that everybody has not spoken about today. It gets spoken about now and then, and that is the federal government. Whether you like it or not, sanctuary cities are not okay with the federal government and marijuana isn't either. I'm wondering if anyone has ever written to the government, contacted the government in any fashion, whether it's individually on the board or as a board, to communicate with them about a pathway to protect these people who are putting in time, energy, and effort with your, uh, basic understanding that, "Well, we're going to do something and we're going to just let you do whatever." And that's what I think I hear. "Oh, well, it's inevitable. It's going to happen. It's every place else." If you're not going to communicate to them about, uh, finding a way to protect them, what can be done so that they're protected when they put out thousands and thousands of dollars into buildings, into permits, into time and energy? The one thing I've noticed is I've watched, oops, he's gone.
He's here.
It was a compliment. He's put in time, energy, and effort and that needs to be talked about. If you are going to just ignore the federal law, I would like to know which laws, that ordinances that you're making I can just ignore with impunity. I mean, it just seems so fair to me that if we just get to pick and choose, that we're going to. The other thing that I look at is, we're talking about 25%, 50%, 40%, 100% tax. Well, if this is quote legitimate, why aren't you charging them the same amount of tax that you charge for every other retail sale? It just, to me, is nuts. It's like we're going to, we're, if you give me enough money, I'm going to let you ignore the law as best I can and we won't protect you. And I find that personally offensive and disgusting.
Thank you. Public comment.
Thanks for letting me speak again. What's, which one of you takes Kieros Smith River?
Your name, please, for the record.
My name is Chuck Orton.
Thank you, Chuck.
Which one of you supervisors takes Kieros Smith River? Wow. Well, I'll be darned. You probably haven't seen that sign then, huh?
No. What's, which one are you referring to?
The one that is 6.5 miles to weed.
Oh, I have seen that sign.
And I've heard all of you say something about children. I went across there and talked to them. I, I went to several schools. They don't have a problem with weed here that I can see at any of the schools right now. This is the tax form I got next door where that sign sits. They're paying taxes on that piece of ground. So which, if the county's getting money, there's got to be a problem here somewhere. Wouldn't you say, sir? When you say, when all five of you say you can't do this in the county and the county's collecting taxes off that sign, sending you to another state to buy that product, which I went and bought some. And I hope, sure, thank you, rest me, because I guess it's, you can't bring them again, cross the line again. And one other thing, too, the, the tide wave, uh, when my aunt and uncle sold, uh, Pacific shores, McIntyre Savanians and Yerney, I got to work out there doing the roads and everything. If, if the tide wave, but it came in and the flood plain runs right from the mouth of Smith River, it would have went right behind the, the fairgrounds here. And when it took this town, just like that other one. The weed thing, I've been working on this a long time. 1970, I went to Grants Pass, took a solar energy class. The instructor lived in Tukelma. He was growing hydoponica at the time, like the mayor said right there about the, uh, strawberries and things. At Humboldt State right now, they're just using hot air. They're not even using the, the, the ground or anything else. Also in Humboldt County, if you have an animal, it's first place in this state, they're having cannabis things for animals, you know, if you had cancer and stuff like that. So if you've got animals, you know, and they put this in the paper, people will really be going, "Hey." So, yeah, that sign, county's getting tax money off it right this minute. So thanks for letting me talk.
Thank you. Public comment. Okay. Mr. Durico and then Jesse, please. Good morning.
Hi, I'm Robert. How you doing? Um, just want to, to back up what this young lady said. You know, I've always would like you guys to write something to the, you know, the federal government, you know, uh, supporting, um, you know, your support of, of the state law. For about 100 years, this state has had the right to a voter initiative. And so that's how we achieved, you know, medical cannabis. Probably most people wouldn't have spoken it up publicly in 1996, you know? So it really took a vote of the, the people, you know? And it's only the Commerce Clause that finds, you know, I've said this over and over again, the, uh, the Controlled Substance Act to, to really hold, you know, ground here over the 10th Amendment, which protects states' rights. So I wanted to throw that out there again and, uh, I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you, Robert. Jesse.
Jesse Davis. Yeah, just, I'd like to take this chance to talk a little bit about federal prohibition in the Controlled Substances Act and how I, what I think, how it relates to Delano County and the work we're doing here. So recently, we had the rescission of the coal memo by, uh, by Jeff Sessions and the Department of Justice. And, um, I think that was a good thing and it, and it gave some clarity to states. And, um, as a result of that, um, the head, uh, the top federal prosecutors in all the West Coast states where this is an issue had a meeting, I believe it was in, in Seattle. They met with the post office, who's been catching a lot of illegally diverted products shipping through their systems. They met with DEA and FBI to make a statement about how they're going to do something about this problem with diversion. It's a big problem out of the legal states. And, um, so the governor of Washington was there, very concerned about their legal market. And they got assurances directly from federal prosecutors. This is the first time they've really spoken about this, where they, they made it very clear that their mission is diversion out of state. These, these points that were in the coal memo that were their issues, not state legal sanctioned systems, but people who are breaking the law and diverting out of state, and that's their top priority, and gave specific assurances to their state licensed legal operators. And that's the first time we've heard that. And the coal memo sort of swept it under the rug and allowed them to kick the can down the road and not deal with the problem. And it was a mistake. And, uh, so now I think we're going to see more clarity on that. And that allows, um, localities to keep the green target off their back by, um, not adopting huge systems that encourage diversion to illegal markets. And that's the target of the federal government.
Great. Thanks, Jesse. Okay, seeing no more public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. Thank you again for your report. We'll go ahead and move on with item number 17 at this time, which has approved and authorized staff to release the request for proposals for the regional systematic safety analysis report as requested by the assistant engineer. Rosanna? Good morning.
The Regional Systemic Safety Plan is a collaboration between the city and county and any other regional stakeholders who want to participate. So that could include the tribes, the harbor. We're looking at data. We're looking at crash data. We're looking at roadway data. We're looking at crash types. Taking that data, compiling it, and basically grouping our highest crash types and highest crash facilities together to implement systemic countermeasures, which the countermeasures are cost-effective solutions. And so this would allow us to put out an RFP. I did put in, it's based on a federal, uh, methodology. I did put in some local requests for the consultant to consider. And those included, previously, we discussed the Highway 199 at Elk Valley Crossroad. So that is specifically mentioned in here for them to consider and, uh, make some suggestions on. Also, the pros and cons of uncontrolled intersections. Uncontrolled versus yield-controlled intersections. Placing unwarranted stop controls on intersections. Installing flashing, flashing beacons at crosswalks of varying lengths. And I also requested a public meeting so that we can hopefully get some input from the community. So there'll be at least one once we have a substantial draft and also a copy of any documents that are, that we would otherwise have to purchase in order to have a complete document.
Thank you, Rosanna. Yeah, reading through this, I'm actually kind of excited about it. I know this has been a detailed discussion for the last several months, or actually several years, with the Delano Local Transportation Commission. I know, um, Jerry and I specifically have been advocating for the intersection at Highway 199 and Elk Valley Crossroads. But there's other intersections that are just as well-plagued with problems on Highway 101 in Elk Valley, Kings Valley. You know, I guess my, my big question is, you're addressing that specific location in this document. How about the other interfaces with the state highway system?
So the, the funds that we received were really meant to be spent on the local system. And so we're actually making a stretch when we're asking them to look at the 199 intersection.
Yeah, but when those, when those intersections essentially cross the state highway system and, you know, that truly is some of our biggest accident-type areas here in the county, whether you're looking at South and North Indian Roads in the Smith River area, whether you're looking at Elk Valley Crossroads, whether you're, you're looking at King Valley Crossroads. So how, how do we address that? How do we stretch it? How do we find that gray area within the context of this funding to do, do the work?
Well, the state should be doing the same type of document on their system.
Yeah. Unfortunately, as you may or may not have followed some of the Local Transportation Commission meetings, that's been like pulling teeth to address these issues. And, um, that's why we advocate for it so much. So what I'm trying to say here, and I appreciate your efforts around 199 and Elk Valley Crossroad, is if we have other documentation to show the state that, hey, there are issues here in our, not only our state transportation system, but also where the county transportation system co-mingle and collide to a certain respect, let's try to address those together. Not sure how much room you have there, but that's just a thought I'm playing around with.
I'll take it from there.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
One more.
Because you talked about, um, unmonitored, uh, intersections. And that's something I brought up earlier in the year. And, um, it didn't, weren't to be looked at because there was no crashes. So you're saying crashes again. And I think our concern is, is, you know, these uncontrolled intersections and intersections are in neighborhoods and there's a lot of close calls that aren't documented. So when you're doing this study and you're looking at crashes, you know, it doesn't make me feel warm and fuzzy because last time I brought this up, I totally got shut down, like, well, there's nothing ever happened. Nobody ever got hit. Well, we want to avoid that. So how do we avoid that?
Well, that, that's one of the reasons why I incorporated into our local components to, to consider. But the intention of a systemic approach is to take those near misses that are happening that we don't know about and take the crashes that we know about and applying them to other locations.
So it sounds like it's really important that when we bring it to the public and have the public meeting, that all those people that are experienced, the pub almost, I'm looking at Mr. Durigo because he's someone I had a conversation with. He lives in a neighborhood where there's a lot of, um, uncontrolled intersections.
Yes.
We need to make sure the public's out to talk about those.
And they're welcome to send me an email and I can put them in the pile for the projects so we can consider them when we're doing it.
Oh, excellent.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and open it up for public, oh, sorry, Supervisor.
Uh, Rosanna, Rosanna. You know, I'm troubled by the statement, how do you report data that has never happened? Like, near misses? How do you quantify that? I appreciate the fact that there's a problem and there've been a number of accidents which have been documented by the highway patrol and our law enforcement agencies. But how do you know when someone just misses one another and then they go about their merry way? That's first things, uh, first, my first observation. And we brought up some issues with regard to South Highway 101 crosswalk in there that could be problematic there. Just no incidences of anybody actually being hit in the crosswalk, um, near Anchor Way and 101 South. So it becomes a non-issue until someone is hurt, I think, or killed. And then suddenly it gets on the radar screen. So I'm, I'm curious to know how you're going to quantify those close near misses?
So what, what we're going to be looking at is the actual data. And when you're looking at crash data, you're looking at the minor injuries, severe crashes, and fatalities. You're not even looking at property damage only. So that's how you establish the crashes for the most part. But you take that data and you look at the scenario. It was an, it was an uncontrolled intersection or a yield-controlled intersection. And then when you design the counter, or implement the countermeasure for that intersection, you also look for similar situations across the community, which is where these near misses are. And you apply the same countermeasure at that location. And you can take the benefit-cost ratio from the documented incident and move it to the other location as well. And that's, that's why systemic safety is really coming about in the rural areas where we don't have the crash data. And so we're able to move and treat other areas as a result of crashes at other locations.
Thank you, Rosanna. Public comment, please. Case seeing none, we're going to go ahead and bring it back to the board. Do we have consensus to approve and authorize staff to release the request for proposals?
Yes.
Everybody good?
Do we need a motion?
No, we don't need a motion. We're just going to move it forward by consensus. Okay, very good. Let's go ahead and move on with item number 18. Approve and adopt ordinance prohibiting commercial cannabis activity by a three-fifths vote as requested by county council. Joel, please join us. Really nothing new here unless you have questions. This is the actual ordinance adoption time, three-fifths vote. Okay. Questions for Joel? Okay. Public comment, please. Okay, seeing none, oops, sorry. We have two. Please, Mr. Hendricks.
Good morning. My name is Kevin Hendrick. I live in District 5. Bob's my supervisor. I'm here today as the chair of the Delano County Democratic Party. Um, we had our Democratic Central Committee meeting last night. We had a good, long discussion about this subject, um, which is of interest to lots of people. And first of all, I just want to thank the people that have worked so hard on trying to figure this out and in your interest as well. After our discussion last night, we, it was a unanimous vote to oppose the adoption of this ban, and I'll explain the reasons. We had previously, um, I previously had said that we would support an interim ban that was, uh, defeated in January because it had an end date. And that was, um, a more comfortable driver for action, for future action. Because this is essentially a ban until it's repealed. This is a permanent ban without an, without an end date. And that is the primary reason that the committee voted to oppose this at this time. We're simply not comfortable supporting a, an ordinance that doesn't have a defined end date. Although I should say we appreciate the statement in the ordinance, a reflection of your intentions to repeal this by December 12th. You know, this is not enforceable. We know that as well. So then it simply is a matter of, um, trust, which isn't in great supply these days. We want... We want to be able to, what we do support, because it's always important to state what you're for, is we do support that the working group and this body move an expedited review and adoption of a comprehensive ordinance, even if you do it in pieces, that does provide for reasonable regulation for cannabis businesses to operate in unincorporated Delnort County. We support the economic development and jobs and small businesses and taxation that will result from those enabling ordinances, so we encourage you to give that fair consideration. And a reminder, which you already know, in 2016, in this county, 59.5 percent of the voters voted for this. That is the will of the people, the will of the majority, and although we recognize it, many of them certainly expected that there would be some reasonable regulation on these kinds of activities in the county, certainly, it's unlikely that people assumed that what they meant was, you should ban it. If they voted for it, they didn't mean you should ban it. That isn't the intention, I'm sure, however confused anybody was on that day, that's not what they thought was going to happen. I've spoken with Jerry about this, and I think he correctly recognizes that some people voted against this, and their concerns need to be recognized, and I think the thoughtful process the working group is going through starts to address that. So in closing, and I don't want to take a lot of your time, if you do adopt this ban today, we urge you to follow through on your promise, that you will repeal this by December Please show us that you can be trusted to carry out the will of the voters, and that you will follow through on the promise that you made.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Derigo.
Hi, Robert, again. You know, so I've come at this from a point of uncertainty for a long time, you know, I've been in front of this board when really only Jerry was the only one that was, you know, that's still here, that was there, and within two weeks, you know, and alls I did was say, you know, hey, let's not drop that number, it might be part of our economy, you know, we're dropping a 99 plant number, you know. Within two weeks, I had, you know, plainclothed officers at my home with a badge around their neck, you know, my heart sunk, you know. I don't know if any of you know what it feels like to be, you know, second-class person, you know, somebody who, you know, if you need to be examined, you might have to bend over, and so they can look at, you know, and make sure you don't got anything tucked in there, what I have, you know, and it's a horrible feeling. And the fact is, I suffer from PTSD today, because, you know, there's nothing like knowing that you're about, that you could just lose your freedom at any moment, because someone doesn't agree with the way you live, you know, and so that was the result of me speaking, you know, about eight years ago here. You know, I didn't get arrested that day, but I shookingly nervously showed these officers my shed, who they said were commonplace to the type used to procreate marijuana. And so I've developed, I have very little trust, you know, and I see your intentions, as the last fellow mentions, you know, the intention is mentioned on this ordinance, and it's a permanent ban, and so for me, it's scary. And I've noticed that three of you, I think, have publicly spoken, that you guys have put together a board, and intend to act on it, maybe Bob as well, and so maybe that should be a little comfort for me. You know, but still yet, you know, I don't think this is really the right decision at all, you know. And then it comes down to, you know, the antics of Roger Gitlin, I think, you know, who's really, you know, worked to kind of represent two different goods, and I know Roger said, well, no, he was just considering what, you know, what the facts were at the cannabis expo, you know, even though he voted, you know, against the three of you that, you know, 72 hours later. And in that meeting, he said, well, Robert, you know, and even cited me as beseeching this board for a decision, you know. So Roger, you can't have it both ways, and I don't want to explain what ethicals are, ethics are, principle is up here, you know. You know, civil disobedience even, you know, and sometimes there's a place for that as well. I shouldn't have to, to be honest, you know, I shouldn't have to say, you can't, you can't be on the cross of the cannabis user at the cannabis expo, and, you know, mention my beseeching of a board, you know. You know, you can't play it both ways, you know, it's unethical, it's undignified, it's, you know, and I said it before, it's like putting yourself a Republican on a Democratic voter guide. It shows you to be somebody that cannot be trusted, you know. And I'm sorry I laughed last time, but that was the best way I could, you know, that's what I want to say, you know, up here, you know, it's not, ha, 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 it's Roger.
Thank you, Robert.
You know, thank you.
Appreciate your time. Good morning.
Good morning, Lydus Sutter, 5th District. I just want you guys to know, there's a lot of people watching these meetings. I looked on YouTube for the last meeting, 32,000 hits. I don't know who's watching, but you folks, whenever you go against the will of the people, that says a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment.
Hi, Victoria Dickey. I didn't really receive an answer to my question, which is, of course, upon cannabis, is whether or not you have contacted the federal government in any fashion. Am I going to get an answer to that, or is it one of those things that it's like, thank you for speaking, go sit down? Is that what I'm getting, it's thank you for speaking, go sit down?
No.
Okay, what?
Please finish your public comment.
Oh, my public request comment is that I would like to know if the board has contacted the federal government, find out if there is any way to do this that is, maybe the commercial comes in, maybe the recreational, maybe this, maybe that, or nothing.
Okay.
And what kind of position they're taking on, whatever. If I get an answer that says, no, we haven't done that, then I might do it myself, so that you don't get burdened by contacting them. Somebody needs to write the letter.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other public comment today?
You're not going to get an answer, I'm not going to.
I just want to finish public comment first, but thank you. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Joel, one of our constituents had a question for us, do you mind addressing that?
We have not asked the federal government anything, but I'm, we know the laws, there's no, there's no mechanism for the federal government to give us some kind of protection for our cannabis growers. We have the coal memo that's been repealed, but, you know, just being observers of the federal government, you know, I think our people are pretty safe. That's basically what the state of California is banking on, and I think it's a fairly safe bet. You know, but since it is federally legal, I don't see that there's much benefit to reaching out to the federal government to ask them, you know, I don't really see a big value there.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Gitlin?
I want to answer three people. Vicky, let's start with you. I have, I've contacted Attorney General Sessions' office and asked for clarification on marijuana, medicinal and commercial, recreational, and I've gotten very clear, it is against the law. This board has, to best of my knowledge, during my time that I served on it, has never reached out to our federal, our congressman, and/or directly to Washington DC for an answer. Now, I want to answer, Mr. Hendricks made an incorrect statement when he said an ordinance is temporary, because it was conflicted by Mr. Derigo's statement, an ordinance is permanent. Mr. Derigo, you're correct, an ordinance is permanent until it is amended. Now, this is not a Republican versus Democratic issue, and I appreciate the fact that Mr. Hendricks has come up here as the spokesman for the Democratic Party. This is a community issue that is not within any political party. This is an issue, any people on both sides of the issue have opinions on this, so when you make this, Democrats feel this way, Republicans feel that way, you really do a disservice to the community. And I would say, if there is a promise implied, or I should say inferred, from some kind of promise that this board is going to do something by December 12th, I can't answer to that. All I know is, once we take a vote today, and presuming 5-0 on the last meeting, I don't know, maybe someone's changed their mind, we'll have to see, but if it's an ordinance, it takes effect 30 days after the fact, if that's correct, County Council, that it will take effect, until and when and if. So there is no, to my knowledge, any implied consent to do the right thing. The community will do whatever it feels is necessary, and they need three of us to come up, I may or may not be a part of that affirmative vote, but that's what the board will do. And again, Mr. Derigo, my attending the cannabis fair has no way, shape, form to say that if I'm on an issue, a mission to find out what people think, and how they think, and what the product does and what it doesn't, I shouldn't be singularly called out, in the way you have done this, to say you went out and you did this in a nefarious way. I have been clear from day one, when you ran against me, my position on recreational marijuana, I think everyone in this room knows my position, it has not changed. If I'm on a search to find out additional information, I shouldn't be criticized for that, I went there and did so with a $20 admission fee, I might add, and I don't know if anyone else from our board went there or not, but I did, and I went there with the intention of perhaps learning something new. I did not. So I've been, excuse me, sir, I'm talking, I'm talking, sir, and you can't speak from back there, if you have something to say, you'll come up here. Now, I will just address these issues, is if we don't speak clearly to you, then I will have to re-appraise myself, reconfigure myself, to find, to let you know how Supervisor Roger Gitlin feels about the introduction of this product into our community. Clearly, it disagrees with you, and I don't think you need to devolve to a level where you go on personal attacks, or you snicker, or you smirk, or you smirk, do some kind of a smirk, as in a disrespectful, this is a complicated issue. It will change our county one way or the, well, it will, if it's introduced, and I feel very strongly about that, and there are lots of people who agree with me on that subject, and we'll find out where the county sits on it, so that's my statement.
Thank you. All right, any other comments from the commissioners before we take the vote?
No, I guess, yeah, I guess I do, I see how you feel, Mr. Hendrick, I just, I didn't want to be at this position, this isn't the position that we thought we were going to start off to be a year ago when we started this process. We all thought it was quite clear, and it came to our attention that some people didn't understand or get what was going on, I'm not sure, but I think we went in hoping to have a temporary ban, and unfortunately, that was ripped out. And my fear is just the state getting control, I've said that publicly, I don't want the state to, you know, they got Mr. Derigo's money, we didn't, and they will continue to do that until we take back control, and unfortunately, the only way we get control is with the permanent ban right now. And that surely was not my intent when this all started. Unfortunately, I was placed in a position now that it's the only way we can get that back. And it's unfortunate, but it's reality right now, and I think we're all going in, or I know I'm going in with the intent of letting the working group do what they need to do. One of the ordinances is already, is already at County Council, and the next one will be going there soon, so they are working and doing the best they can, and I'm going to trust that they will continue to do that.
Thank you, Supervisor. All right, do we have a motion on the table?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Callen?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
All right, we're going to move forward with item number 19, which is Considered Miscellaneous Legislative in Budget Matters. Jay?
No additional legislative issues to report today, and no additional letters at this time. I will notify the board at this point in regards to our federal lobbyists, there's, we received a letter during this meeting indicating that Mr. Burns and Mary Scott Hardwick are moving from one firm to another firm, and I'll be working on that over the next week or so, for any type of transition that we may recommend to the Board of Supervisors. The contract goes through June minimum, it's actually got some automatic renewals, but I've received a letter from Stu Van Squeake, who's the principal at that company, and it's an amicable workup between the two, and I'll be reporting back to the board at the next meeting.
Thank you, Jay. All right, let's go ahead and move forward then with committee reports and activities. Supervisor Berkowitz, please kick us off today.
Mr. Chairman, I think I have something, some sad news to report. Kurt Strumberg has just notified me that Chuck Blackburn has had a heart attack and has died, so.
That's, that is very.
That's a horrible piece of news. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for reporting that out.
Long-term, long-time Chamber of Commerce employee Sharon Lowry has retired. It was my pleasure to honor her years of service by attending her retirement celebration held at the Chamber of Commerce office. The local Republican Women's Organization had a meet the candidates night, where we were privileged to listen to candidates, Chris Howard, running for 3rd District, and Supervisor, Supervisor of 3rd District, and David Mason, running for District Supervisor in the 4th District, detail their accomplishments and their hopes and aspirations for the community. Last week, Supervisor Gitlin and I were able to listen to the Director of the Delnort County Economic Development Corporation lay out their plans to revitalize this county, and to foster a new interest in economic development. This past Saturday, Supervisor Gitlin and I, along with dozens of volunteers, basically 50 volunteers, participated in a major cleanup of the former homeless camp located across South Beach on the east side of Highway 101. This cleanup effort covered a massive area of about 20 yards wide and about 150 yards long. I'd like to thank Recology for the donation of all the dumpsters for the event, along with State Fish and Wildlife Service for permission to conduct this effort on their property. It was the subject of the triplicate article this morning, and we're glad that they named all of the people involved. Last Sunday, I was able to take a helicopter trip to the, from the airport, to Point St. George Lighthouse. For the limited time that the restoration crew has, it has accomplished quite a lot. This has been on my bucket list for a long time. And lastly, I want to remind candidates that they have signed the Code of Fair Campaign Practices Form as delineated in the California Elections Code. Robating candidates for office from other candidates for office and questioning them on how and where they got the money to run should not be tolerated in a campaign. A sitting supervisor who questions other candidates on their motives to run for election should also be considered unethical conduct. I would hope that a candidate who allows this behavior would repudiate such underheaded tactics and not resort to them in the future. And that's my report.
Thank you. Supervisor Callen?
I don't have a lot to report, I was out for a while. I met with Michael Thornton to discuss homelessness in our county, had a meeting with Blake and Wes regarding the new marketing group for the visitor, that the visitors' board hired, met with Terry Sapponhan, we had a great meeting regarding youth in our community and potential programs, we're actually meeting again on Thursday to continue the conversation. And like I said, I was unable to attend a couple of the meetings, I know Matt gave his resignation at the airport, I'm sure Supervisor Hemmingson will be talking a little bit more to that, he will definitely be a big loss, and that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Supervisor Gitlin, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'm a little shaken by that passing of Chuck Blackburn, who was a dear friend and a confidant, and I'm a little shaken up by that, so please excuse me.
I understand, we'll move that.
I too met with, wish farewell to Sharon Lowry for her near decade worth of service to the county. Also, we did attend two-by-two healthcare district meeting, and after that meeting, we have some good news to report, that our letter of December 12th from this county to Assembly Member Wood was responded to in a very popular county to Assembly Member Wood was responded to in a very positive way, and he is on board, it appears to be, with addressing the four needs that concern our county and people who live in our county, in Sutter practices, which include emergency room, um, changes, which apparently are happening as we speak, the excessive charges that, uh, the hospital charges on non-emergency room, the tax-exempt status of Sutter Coast Hospital, and the transparency issue. So this is good news, that we'll be hearing back from our assembly member who is on board with us in helping us mitigate these issues, and I'll be very interested to hear that, how this proceeds in our next step. Um, I watched a teleconference on hope for homelessness, as presented by CSAC, conducted by two supervisors, and I was hoping to learn something new, two supervisors in fairly rural counties, uh, one was Sierra, I'm trying to remember who the other one was, and some were rural, and they were there to offer new solutions to this hugely growing problem of systemic homelessness in the state, and for that matter, even the country. Unfortunately, I did not learn anything new, other than it isn't just a city problem, it isn't just a county problem, it's a problem that has lots of different facets and involves lots of different kinds of people. People who are mentally ill, people who have drug addiction, people who have alcohol addiction, people who fall through the cracks of life, and, uh, they're, they're being victimized by being in a situation where we are complaining about it and talking about it and cleaning up their messes, as Supervisor Berkowitz just mentioned, but really, nothing's being done. So, um, I'm going to see about conducting a town hall, probably in April, to see, hear how our, our county feels about this, and I'll see about getting a date in the month of April, so we can invite people in our county, people who are suffering from homelessness, and people who are feeling the, the impact of what systemic homelessness looks like, and, and to see if we can come up with some ideas, because the ones that are being bandied about are clearly not solving the problem. Uh, I do have some input on that, and I believe that it has to do with mandated services, which to some, it appears to be severe, but clearly, we're not solving the problem, it's getting worse, and we hear this all up and down the state. A fellow supervisor in Orange County also conducted a similar cleanup down there in the Santa Ana Riverbed, and the numbers were astounding, how much trash was down there and what have you. So we'll be exploring this locally and very soon. Met also with the Del Norte Economic Corporation, Development Corporation, Roxanne Haynes and Melissa Blackburn, who today I offer my condolences to, and we learned that Del Norte County situates 57th on the list of 58 counties with a negative 2.9 percent, I use the word growth in italics because it isn't growth, and how this is, must be turned around. And Roxanne shared examples of other cities that have turned this around, Williston, North Dakota, et cetera. This is a daunting process for Del Norte County to turn itself around, because to have the 57th worst, and I think there were five counties that had actually negative growth. We're only last save Alpine County, and how we must address this issue, it clearly needs to be addressed in an issue where this area can realize its full potential. So we'll be exploring that in future meetings, and hopefully, Roxanne will make a presentation to our Board of Supervisors on how and what kind of cost, uh, it will be necessary to address this issue of economic depression in, uh, the county. Also learned at that meeting from Melissa, that Realtors have brought to my, our attention, there's some kind of a glitch in the system access, it's called Realtist. Uh, I've asked our IT expert Dan, Director Dan McCorkle, to entertain a meeting with President of the Association and, um, other members who wish to participate, to find out why there is incorrect information being communicated on property profiles associated with APNs and maps and what have you. There is a problem, and it was brought to my attention, and Dan has said anything he can do to mitigate this problem, address it and fix it, he will do, and that's great news. Uh, yes, cleanups are in the news, we conducted a, our Lions Club cleanup once every six weeks on the 101, cleaned that area up, and of course, the highlight of my last 10 days was I met with Frank Kemp from the, uh, Department of Fish and Wildlife in the state, and he approached us on how volunteers could help clean up this horrific mess on 101 South near the billboards, and I, I think you've heard all the list of people, Team Home Depot, Team Walmart, Crescent East Hardware, the Latter Day Saints, missionaries, excuse me, Amateur Radio Club, KPOD, KCRE, Surf Riders, Port of Pints, all helped in this huge project, and we actually, this morning, got the actual count of how much filth and debris was removed. It is 13,280 pounds, that translates to 6 and 3/4 tons. Mr. Reed, you are correct, between 4 and 7 tons is what it was estimated, and it has now been ascertained at 6 and 3/4 tons. And I will close off the meeting by saying my, my comments at this, at not, not one cost a dollar to Del Norte County. No public monies were meant in abating, were dedicated in abating this huge mess, it doesn't exist anymore. That's my report.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I'm truly saddened to hear the, the news of Chuck Blackburn, we've been pretty close friends over the last 40 years, and, um, that's very sad news to hear. Uh, anyway, beyond that, uh, I did have a, uh, conference call with Senator Mavire's staff on the Wales omnibus bill, uh, we had discussion, uh, on how that's proceeding, uh, things seem to be moving right along. I met with the Talabodany Nation Council at their meeting, uh, as Supervisor Callen said, we had a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, where, um, we learned, uh, that Matt is, Matt Lightner is going to take another job, um, at, uh, at an airport in Wisconsin, uh, it's kind of where his family is, uh, it's, we're saddened to see him go. Um, I was on the board when we hired him, and he was truly head and shoulders above all the other applicants, uh, and he is going to be sorely missed. Had a meeting with Michael Thornton from True North, uh, had, met with him for half an hour or so, discussed different things, homeless being one of them. Uh, local transportation commission meeting, had a meeting with, or a conference call with Kim Van from, uh, she's the Director of California USDA, invited Eric Weir, as well as Wes White, to attend, discussing, uh, future projects and how the USDA might be able to help fund those. Uh, also, uh, went out to the airport to see Chief Steve Wakefield's return, um, back to Crescent City, happy to see that he is, uh, on the, uh, long road to recovery, and we, uh, I certainly wish him the best. Got all my campaign paperwork in, uh, so I'm officially a candidate. Um, I also went to the Silver Ball, it's my first Silver Ball that I've gone to, but, uh, I was, and it's the last Silver Ball, I guess, that they're going to have.
50 years.
50 years of, uh, of Silver Ball, but, uh, it was nice that Roland and Bill Hartwick were there, they were at the first Silver Ball and, uh, and at the last, so, uh, it was nice to see that they were there. Uh, and as of the, and on another note, having to do with the Airport Authority, as of the day before yesterday, Contour Airlines has sold over 1,000 tickets.
Outrageous.
Uh, and so that is, uh, that is moving right along, their inaugural flight will be, uh, on April the 11th, um, down to Oakland, and we're going to see how that all pans out. And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Um, wrapping this up real quick, participated in several economic summit meetings with the Chamber of Commerce staff and committee participants, attended the School System Reform Team meetings, um, also, as Supervisor Berkowitz mentioned, the Republican Women's Committee meeting. Entertained some discussions with Mayor Enscore and Eric Weir and Jay Serena on emergency services preparedness and just exactly where we're at here in the county, um, to Friday night downtown, even though it was a very wet evening, um, out there doing some work, getting out and doing some handshaking. Um, attended the Del Norte Local Transportation Commission meeting with Supervisor Hemmingson, and had a great deal of discussion, as there were some report outs on things that we requested from Caltrans on, um, our continuing push towards Elk Valley Crossroads and Highway 199, and they reported out on some findings from Lake County on Highway 20. Did agenda review, had a North Coast Regional Air Quality Control Board meeting in Eureka, uh, along with Supervisor Hemmingson. It was great to see everybody here from the county and the city and close friends of the Wakefield family attend the reception out the airport. It was, uh, overwhelming to see the support for our fire chief, um, he is truly loved in this community. Had a discussion with Jay McCubby of the TUP program on some smoke-free housing that I'm sure will come before the board here and, uh, within the next year. Like Jerry, I attended the Silver Ball, which, um, briefly explained supports and has supported for the last 50 years, um, the ability of young women to access health care by paying for their lodging or, um, transportation services out of the area when those services aren't available here. And, uh, it was a heck of a program while it ran for the last 50 years, we're going to hate to see it go, but, uh, they still have quite a bit of funding that they have raised, and quite a bit they just raised this weekend, um, so I'm sure it'll continue down that path a little bit longer. Working closely with, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Kime and Mayor Enscore on putting together our, um, list of activities per se for our delegation from Japan, I'm looking forward to getting that moved forward. And then I will close with the news that was brought to us by Supervisor Berkowitz. Uh, you know, I've known Supervisor Blackburn since 1994, when I first moved here, we, we served on the initial Del Norte County Fishing Game Commission when it was formed, um, a great man, uh, great supporter in District 3 until he moved to District 4, but, uh, he will sorely be missed, and our prayers and love go out to the Blackburn family today. With that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.